And I want to just say that I feel like I have been remiss as Chair for the last few times for not starting with the pledge, so I would like to start with that. I'll put the flag in the back of the room, please. As it is the larger flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. All right, before we get into the case, I'd like to start with introductions. Beginning on my right.
Yep, Bob DeRozier.
Oh, Teri Bonzer.
Teresa Bascom.
Bonnie Winona McKinnon.
Kathy Mayo.
Right, and I am going to seat Mr. DeRozier for Romeo Denaeus, who is absent this evening. And we have only one case tonight, and that is Case 23-014, variance request from Stevens, 36 Whites Grove Road. This is their second application. It's an application from Cindy A. and Dennis H. Stevens requesting a variance from Article 2, Section C 3A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit the building of a replacement residential structure with less than the minimum 20-foot setback on three property lines. The proposed front-east setback is requested to be seven feet, the proposed, excuse me, proposed rear west setback is requesting 15 feet, and the right north side setback is requesting for eight feet. The property is located at 36 Whites Grove Road in Nottingham and is identified as Tax Map 63, Lot Number 61. The applicants, please come out. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Please state your name and your relationship to them.
Who I am? Yeah, okay. My name is Sean Dunphy. I'm an attorney from Cronin, Bissin, and Zalinski, and I am here tonight representing the applicants, Dennis and Cindy Stevens.
All right, please state your names.
Cindy Stevens, 36 Whites Grove Road.
And I'm Dennis Stevens, 36 Whites Grove Road.
Okay. Well, as the Board knows, we're here tonight to request a variance from Article 2, Section C 3A of the zoning ordinance, which is the setback requirements. The property we are discussing tonight is a .11 acre parcel on Potawatka Way Pond. The current structure on the property is a single-story cottage built back in 1965. It is a seasonal camp because there is currently no heat. It is winterized in the winter. It has a small kitchen, limited living space, a basement that has a dirt floor that is a crawl space, and the current sleeping arrangement is there are bedrooms up in the loft area, which can only be accessed by a steep ladder. We are requesting the variance to update the home and for the needs of a growing family and to meet today's safety standards, as well as making it more livable for more use. The proposed home is going to be a two-story modest home, which will meet the setback requirements on one side. It will match the current setback on one of the other sides, be an improvement on the third side of the setback, and will be moved out from 13 to seven feet on the setback area that is closest to the abutting property in the front, where the front door would be. Notably, this property, or excuse me, this home as proposed will move farther away from the lake, which is something that is always a positive in terms of protecting our water bodies. If the Board is okay with that, I'll just go through each variance element at a high level. I know you all had a chance to look at the application, so I don't want to belabor it. So, as we know, the first two elements are very similar in nature and are usually read together. They are the variance will not be contrary to the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance is observed. The Supreme Court has provided a baseline test for this, which is for a variance to be contrary to the public interest and inconsistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Its granting must violate the ordinance's basic zoning objectives, and mere conflict with the terms of the ordinance is insufficient. Here, we have little to no conflict with the basic zoning objectives because we are not changing the essential character of the neighborhood. It is a residential lot in the residential zone. The lots in this area are relatively small, which is similar to most lake communities in New Hampshire. So keeping the setbacks similar on three sides and a slight increase on the other is not going to change the overall character of the area. And almost none of the surrounding properties meet the setback requirements in this neighborhood. And as I said, we're requesting to move the property away from the lake, which, under New Hampshire law, is a positive based on water body protection. And this change will help ensure a new, modern home can be built with modern safety standards and modern material and just ensure an overall safer living situation for the Stevens family. And as I said, we're replacing a structure with a new structure, so there's no issues of further overcrowding, and there's no issues with the density, other than a slight increase of four total feet for this new house compared to the old one. And then, as we know, number three under the element is the substantial justice prong, which is measured by whether the loss to the applicant in the event that the variance is denied outweighs the general public interest in denying the variance. Here, the loss of the Stevens family would be substantial because they would be limited to the small cottage footprint that they have now, which, again, is, has no heat. It's an outdated layout and it has limited space. The public would see no benefit in denying this variance because the structure will stay closer to the lake. The new home will be visually appealing to the neighbors and to the overall character of the area, and keeping the outdated cottage with the ladders to get to the sleeping area won't benefit anyone. And then the fourth element is the diminution in value question for the abutting properties. And so the surrounding properties will be minimally impacted by this proposed new home. As I said, all the homes are close together in this area, and we're replacing an old structure with a new one, which will benefit the views, the environment, the lake, and the neighborhood. And we also have an abutter who wrote their support. I just want to clarify, just based on feedback from the other meetings, there is only two abutters for this project, and to my knowledge, neither one has raised any objections or concerns about their property values. So you can take that for what it's worth at this point. And then the fifth element is the hardship, which we have two tests. The first part of the first test is little enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Denial of the variance would result in an unnecessary hardship. The setback rules we are asking a variance from are meant to protect against overcrowding and density, as well as safety concerns. This project has been reviewed by town officials, who have cited no safety concerns. We have attempted to, as we know, we had an application before that was a little different than this one. We took some of the concerns of the neighbors and tried to change the property as best we could to make sure that there is any concern that overcrowding and density are dealt with, and that is what we have done and presented to you. And just again, that area is made up of small lots on a very developed area of land, so there's not much more room for development, and we're, again, attempting to move this property away from the lake. And for a property like this, where it is a grandfathered structure with no real uses under the ordinance, any changes we would make would require a variance. So that is basically why we're here today. And the abutting, or, excuse me, the property is right next to the water, which also limits the possible ways of development, and we have tried to avoid getting closer to that. And the second element under that, excuse me, the second prong under the element is the proposed use is a reasonable one. We're just requesting the residential use in the residential zone so that the Stevens family can get a little more use out of their lake property. And then the alternative hardship test, it will be deemed to exist if and only if owing to a special condition of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is necessary to enable a reasonable use. In this case, a variance is really necessary to have any use, other than the cottage that is currently grandfathered in or matching the footprint of that cottage. So it's pretty difficult to find any reasonable use that won't require some kind of variance. And the cottage location, it doesn't meet the public goals of trying to protect the lakes at this point, and it's not built to the modern standards. That's what we're trying to do, is just make sure this house is a complete house for the Stevens family. And the lake, again, makes it difficult for development purposes. And the use is reasonable because we are improving lake safety, occupant safety, and making a functional home. I did have a little bit about some of the concerns that were raised before, but I won't go into that. I will just say again, we're back here with a different application because the changes were made due to some of the abutter concerns, to try to make sure everyone is happy with this development and it still fits the Stevens family needs. They've tried to work with everyone and try to make this a collaborative process, and we hope that with no one here to object, that means we've met that goal, but we can assume that. So I would just ask, based on the presentation and the criteria, I think we've met it, and I just ask that you approve this variance. Thank you.
Any questions?
How many, how many abutters are there around this property?
There are two abutters.
Two? Just two?
Yes.
And one of them is this Andrew Stevens?
Well, yes. Andrew Stevens is a family member, and he's in a butter.
Yeah, he has a lot of...
And the other, the other butter is the Collins Family Trust. And I have with me a letter from them approving our construction from previous applications, which encroached upon the setback on their side. However, with this application, there is no setback variance requested on that property line. We meet the 20-foot.
You said you're moving further from the lake. Which side is that, and how much further away are you going?
It's on the west side, on the lakefront side, of course, and if you look at the plan, you'll see a retaining wall along that side and a dock. The existing to the foundation is 22.85 feet, and we're moving it two feet, the foundation two feet further. To be, to be clear, and I don't want to, you know, cloud anybody's eyes with this, the second floor has a two-foot overhang that encompasses that. Okay, so the, the structure is being pushed back, so the clearances to the water are increased by two feet. But if you go with eaves or bump outs of the second floor, we're matching that.
Okay, your paperwork says the west setback request is 15 feet. The existing setback is 15.65.
Yes, that is...
But change.
That, that is shown on the plan, and I was looking at the northwest corner when I was giving you that example. On the southwest corner, the shorefront jumps in a good seven feet or so, five feet, and so the clearances on that side, the existing is 13.65, and the adjusted, the new one is 15.65, so an increase of 15 feet, of two feet, okay? And the second floor bump out, which is a screen and porch, is 15 feet. Okay, so it's going from 13.65 to 15 feet. So it's an increase of 1.35. But to be consistent, if we measure to the foundation, to the first floor, anywhere up to 10 feet above, you know, above ground level, the entire structure is moving two feet on both corners away from the lake.
None of your house will be closer to the lake. It's going to be, even with the bump out, it's going to be the same distance.
Even with the bump out, on one side, on one corner, it's going to be the same distance, but since we took it away, the other side's going to be like 15 inches further away, okay? On the second floor.
And where is, how far out of the 20-foot setback is your current east setback?
Okay, so the, on the east side, you can see the 20-foot setback side line, and the building corner is very close, so it's called the existing 21 feet on, on the worst corner, on the closest corner. And on that corner, we're going to 13 feet. So that's a seven-foot, I'm sorry, eight feet, moving closer, but two of that is from the waterfront, moving it away, so it's a net six feet.
And your front setback, your east setback, you're requesting seven feet?
Yes.
To be, to be within seven feet?
Yes.
Instead of 20.
And that is the portico. For a width of like 12 feet, the front porch projects out from the building. It's shown as a dotted line on the plan, and that's seven feet. The building foundation is 13 feet, the portico is seven feet. On the other corner, it's 15 feet. That is also, that entire property line is abutted by property that is owned by the family.
Well, it may not always be family. So you can say that, but we have to consider that's it.
Understand.
Are you able to see all these? You good?
Yeah, I'm just looking at it right now.
I, I have a couple of full-size plans, if anybody would like to look at them.
And wasn't there an issue last time about septic not being on your property?
There's no issue, and there's no permanent problem with that.
Okay. That was in the back of my mind, so I just thought I'd ask. Anybody else have anything?
I have a question about a statement that, I'm sorry, I forget your name, the attorney.
Sean Dunphy.
That Sean made. And I wrote it, maybe I didn't write it down exactly, but you said, "Most existing homes on the lake do not meet the setbacks." And I'm wondering if you just said that, or if you know that to be true?
Um, if, oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Because we, we get a lot of requests for setback variances, and I'm kind of wondering just for our knowledge.
For example, the two nearest abutters that we have, on the north side, they are four feet from our property line. On the far south side, on the other side, where the abutters are, they are one inch encroaching over our property line, and that's part of their shed corner. Their house is probably three feet from the property line. So our two closest abutters outside of the Collins and the Stevens on either side, that's who I just explained.
They're, they're not meeting the setbacks.
Right.
I think he said, "In that area."
Yes, yeah, I was just going to say that. I, I...
It's limited to that.
Well, I'm just wondering, because it's a question before the Board all the time, from the planning board, from the building inspector. We tend to grant variances if they're reasonable, but if you start out with a whole neighborhood that's not meeting the setbacks, whenever anybody does anything, they have to come here. I mean, it has nothing to do with this particular, but just as a general, to add to our body of information, I'm kind of wondering now about that whole neighborhood, like how many houses don't meet the setbacks already that are existing? I mean, it's like they drew the ordinance up. Did they go around and measure? Probably not.
Most of these lots were carved out, yes, before the ordinance, and...
Right, I know.
People liked their lakefront properties, so they tried to jam in as many as they could.
I don't even think, some people knew where the property line was, they just...
Right.
End up very close.
This is, yeah.
I don't know for sure, but 50, 60, 70 years ago, Mr. White, who owned most of Whites Grove Road, he went out and he placed corner markers. And my corner markers, for example, are axle rods and gear, gears, and, and they're very descriptive on, on the plot plan of what they are, and they're buried deep. And that's, I'm sure they weren't thinking setbacks, they're just thinking property sizes and how far back and who gets what.
We didn't have setbacks before zoning.
Of course, they were all camps, they weren't...
Houses. They were made to be camps.
Yeah. Anyway, it was just a, a point that I, that you made me think about, because we get some flack, because we tend to, we tend to go one way with this, but it's, we, we tend to get a lot of reasonable requests, I think.
Right.
And people don't understand that if they're not sitting here, you know?
No, I know. I mean, I looked at all of 75, the building inspector, and I thought they were all, they were all good.
Yeah. I know.
I think, for me, my issue is I, I don't know that going seven feet and eight feet is necessarily the right thing to do when it is 20, and your, your house now, did you currently, your cabin? Every time I've asked what your current setback is, you start talking about the different sides, and you give me two angles and the changes. I'm not hearing, "Your front setback is what now, and you're going to what? Your side is what, right, northeast, southwest?" I'd like to know what they are, because...
I can provide that if you would like me to.
Thank you. Hold on until I get to the...
The, the non-engineer should provide that.
Well, just so you know, I'm retired nurse.
Yes.
Okay? I've been to training for this stuff, but I'm still not an engineer, and I never will be, don't care to be. Okay, so the east setback, which is the front, your current one is what?
So the current setback is 13 feet on the front. We are asking to go to seven feet.
Correct.
Yes.
Rear, which is the west?
I'm sorry, correction?
No, that's...
That's, yeah. And then the, the west, sorry, I don't have a compass on here.
The west is the...
Okay.
Is the rear.
Gotcha, sorry. Lawyer, I don't know. So the current setback is 15.65 feet on the, the west, and it's going to, I mean, excuse me, sorry, I'm confusing myself. It currently is 13.65 feet, and it is going to 15.65 feet.
Okay, and in our document here, it says 15.65, going to 15, which is why I was asking why...
I got the 15, because this little bump out, little bump out comes out. 15.
Okay.
This little, this...
And the side, and the sidelines.
House is 15.65, but the bump out is up on the second floor, right? Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Is 15.65, so that's the current setback for there on that side?
Currently, the house is a little up. It, if you look at the plan, where the 13.65 ends, if you'd like, I can come up and point it out.
Okay, 13.65, okay. So this is where it's being set back? All right, so the south side is within, is within code, and then the north side?
Currently, it is 7.98 feet, and we are asking to go to eight feet, so...
Okay, so that's a new slight improvement.
That side's not, that side's not changing at all.
Right, I, yeah, it's negligible.
But I think an interesting point is that none of these, except maybe the south, meet the setbacks.
Correct.
None of them.
But going 13 to seven is a, is taking a big jump there. Six feet in, more. So it's making a, essentially making the whole place more non...
Is that a covered porch or an open porch?
Open porch.
That's an open porch.
I know, but...
Yes.
It's not a large house. Like, what are the dimensions of your house on the first floor?
It's got a roof, but this porch is open.
On what side?
What are the foundation dimensions?
This porch is open.
Can you tell me what the foundation dimensions are? The part that goes in the ground.
The foundation dimensions are 30 by 40 for the, for the new building. The existing are 30 by 36.
So it's...
An increase of four feet.
Yep.
I think on the tax map, tax card, it says 23 by 28.
And I have the tax card with me. The dimensions you see on there are like dimensions to, not the full length of the building, but two sections of the building?
Okay.
Like the entrance? So you have to add up each section, get the total length of the building? If you'd like to see the tax, the tax card, I'll pull it up.
And just to clarify, on the front of the house, the entire structure isn't going six feet past where it is, it's just the porch, so it's not going to be as substantial as it sounds, just by hearing the current setbacks.
Okay.
Do you understand?
The porch, the portico over the front door is seven feet setback. The building wall is 13 feet setback.
It's the porch.
Okay.
It's open.
13, which is what it currently is.
This is the porch, yeah.
So what I had said before, when you had asked where we do include bump outs and the edges and stuff is correct, because you had said no, and I'm like, yeah, as far as I know, if your property in any way extends beyond, it still counts, or your house extends beyond, it counts.
Yes, you're right.
Thank you, I like to hear that.
Any bump out, any bump out of the structure is involved in the setback.
Thank you.
But varies per town. I will clarify that.
Okay, but you're hearing this one. You're moving to this one, so you need to know what we do. All right. Any other questions? Kathy, Bob, anything? Teri?
Yeah.
All right, I will entertain a motion if you have no further questions.
I move in Case Number 23-014 VA Stevens, 36 Whites Grove Road. Is this app two? Does that mean application two?
Yes, this is second application.
Okay, the second application, that we approve the application as presented.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
It's been moved and seconded by Bonnie and Teri that we approve Case 23-014 VA Stevens, 36 Whites Grove Road. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving Case 23-014 VA Stevens, please signify by raising your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's been passed 5-0-0.
Thank you for telling, I'm sorry for the...
The way it goes sometimes, right?
We really appreciate your time.
You're welcome. And don't forget, you, there is a 30-day window where someone can, so anything you do in that time, you know, you may be doing it at your risk, okay? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, folks, other business for tonight. There is no further public, so we have public comment at this time, there is a meeting here. We'll move on. Any board member updates? Anybody doing trainings coming up? Anybody doing trainings coming up? Kathy, you still, are you going to go Saturday? Anybody else going to, you're going to be away? Are you going Saturday or looking into that at all?
No.
You still doing your online training? Yes. Terry, you going to do the training Saturday at all? No? Okay. Anybody else have anything else? No? All right.
And can I just ask about the research that we're doing? Are we going to take that research and present it to the planning board, because they...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Approval of minutes is next. We have July eighteenth. Is that Terry? Romeo's still not here, and Kevin is not here, so we will need to defer that one one more time. And, and it's from September twelfth. Looks like most of us were, actually, all of us here were at the September meeting. Did you all review the minutes? All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Kathy moved to approve the minutes for September twelfth, and Terry has seconded. Any edits or anything that you've got, just approve, right? All those in favor of approving the minutes from September twelfth, seconded by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, five oh oh. All right. And that's all we have for tonight. Anybody have anything else? No, short, sweet, quick. Meeting is adjourned.